Good afternoon. Welcome to the New Ulm Planning Commission meeting, four thirty P M., Thursday, January thirtieth, two thousand twenty. First of all, I'd like to welcome Ann Earl to the commission as a new commissioner for two thousand twenty. And our first item will be to approve the December nineteen, two thousand nineteen minutes.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Done. Med- uh, motion carried. Our next item of business is gonna be, um, public hearing to consider the amendment to section nine point one four, general regulations of the city code to allow zero lot line setback standards for residential buildings sharing a common party wall. I'm gonna refer to staff for their report.
Thank you. At last month's meeting, the commission had a discussion about, um, the continuing need for people that are building twin homes to get, um, a side yard setback variance. And during the course of that discussion, it was noted that, um, there's really no purpose served in having to get that variance. If you want a twin home, you have to have a common wall. So that means, you know, you have to have a zero foot setback. So the staff has, uh, prepared, um, an ordinance for that purpose. I'll go through the staff report. The applicant in this case is the community development department. The, um, comprehensive plan land use designation that's impacted by this ordinance would be the low, medium, and high density residential areas. Uh, the zoning designations impacted by this ordinance would be the R two, which is a single and two family residence district, and the R three, which is a multiple family residence district. Public hearing notice for the, um, for this particular request was published on January eighteenth edition of the journal. Public comment, uh, we have received none as of January twenty seventh, and since that time, we have not received any. Project description, uh, as noted, uh, earlier, the planning commission, um, directed the staff to prepare an amendment, and this is to create a zero lot line standards for the purpose of avoiding the need to secure one or more variances in order to construct twin homes or townhomes in the R two and R three zoning districts. The amendment would address two major problems, uh, with our current zoning ordinance, um, and they are as follows. A one, our current requirement is a ten foot side yard setback in the R two zoning district, and a fifteen foot setback in the R three zoning district. The proposed change for twin home and townhome projects, the setback requirement for the common party wall would be zero feet. Second area, uh, B number one, current requirement, some townhome projects create lots for residential units surrounded by a lot under community or association ownership. The proposed change establishes regulations that allow setback and lot area requirements to be measured using the entire parcel of property. And so hopefully, that will eliminate the need to, um, get variances. The proposed change, um, noted, uh, will eliminate variance that serve no purpose. Housing trends for the last twenty years have seen the introduction and market acceptance of twin homes and different types of townhouse projects. In New Ulm, this is necessitated, as stated earlier, a need for variances. Staff has researched the zoning codes of seven Minnesota communities of similar size and character to New Ulm to see how they address zero lot line, um, construction standards. And from that information, we prepared the, um, proposed zoning amendment. We also, um, investigated, um, the requirements of state statute as well as the state building code. The amendment has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney's office. Uh, the proposed amendment would be placed in section nine point one four, general regulations in chapter nine of the city code, and the amendment, um, is found in attachment one. Planning commission considerations, um, number one, does the planning commission believe that the proposed amendment adequately addresses this issue? And the second consideration is, are there additional or fewer requirements the planning commission would like to see incorporated into the amendment? Staff would recommend approval of the amendment as described in attachment one. Uh, two motions are provided, one to approve, one to deny, and then, um, attached, um, information is, uh, includes a proposed, um, ordinance. Ordinance number is twenty dash zero three six. Just real briefly, if you look at the ordinance, um, in your amendment, or in your agenda packet, you'll note that, um, we provide five different definitions, um, and then we provide standards, um, for lot area, for setbacks, and then we have other requirements, um, there are four of those. That will conclude the staff report.
Well, this is a public hearing. If anybody in the audience would like to be heard, uh, I'll open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
I think this is pretty much cut and dry, and I think the staff did a good job preparing the report, so.
I also would like to comment that, you know, this will hopefully make our zoning a little easier for future, for variances, and clear up some, um, terminology for the community, and, you know, it is a tr- a common trend that's, we're seeing, you know, within our community, so feel we're adapting and moving forward. Again, any other public comments? With none being, I'm gonna close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve or deny.
I'd move to approve the proposal.
Second.
I've got a motion to approve and a second, and so all in favor signify by saying, signal aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And we're gonna go on to the next item here, it's three point two. It is to consider the applicant of Tim Reiki on behalf of Tim Reiki Real Estate Holdings, LLC requesting a conditional use permit to allow location of a residential dwelling unit on the first floor of a building situated in the B two service district, zoning district. This property is legally described as lot one, block one oh four, north of Center Street. The property street address of the property is one oh one, North Broadway. John?
All right. Um, and a little bit further description of where this property is located, it's located on the west side of Broadway at the intersection of First South and Broadway, so directly behind us here. The comprehensive land use designation for this property is the downtown. Surrounding land uses according to the comprehensive plan would be, um, to the north and east, downtown, to the west, downtown, and then to the south, public and semi-public. It's zoning desi- designation again is the B two, the service business district. Surrounding zoning, um, includes to the west and south, uh, the B one, uh, limited business district, to the north, B two, and then to the east, uh, the general business district. Currently, this site is, um, uh, currently on this site, the second floor of this building is used for two apartments, and the first floor is used for, uh, business purposes. Um, the north addition to the building, um, where the apartment is being proposed is currently vacant. The building was previously used and is still used for business purposes. Current area land uses include, uh, to the east, a municipal building and downtown businesses, to the south, the library, um, to the west, apartments, and then to the north, an automotive repair shop. Notice has been provided to all property owners within three hundred fifty feet of the subject property, um, and as of January twenty seventh, um, we have had no public comments, um, and as of today, we still have no public comments on this project. Historically, this property has been used for business purposes with apartments on the second floor. The property owner is proposing to, proposing to construct a one-room, five hundred twenty foot, uh, square foot loft-style apartment on the north part of the existing building. The south and east part of the building will remain used for business purposes and are one, and is one thousand eighty-two square feet in size. I mean, you can see that in our attachments, um, specifically option one, we'll go over that in a bit. The city council at its December seventeenth, twenty nineteen meeting, uh, approved amending the city code to allow apartments on the first floor of a building in the B two zoning district through a conditional use permit process. An apartment on the first floor of the building is allowed in the B two zoning district with a conditional use permit. This is the first conditional use permit application that the city has received that pertains to the, uh, pertains to a proposed apartment on the first floor of a building in the B two zoning district. The property has stated, uh, that he has had difficulty leasing the first floor of this building at this location for business purposes. In the attachments, we have the application for a conditional use permit, we have a zoning map, uh, showing the location of the property, we have aerial photographs, um, of the property, and the proposed building layouts provided by the applicant. I should note that, um, option one, um, in the proposed building layouts is the preferred option by the applicant. The applicant also provided a, an off-street parking map, um, as attachment five. Attachment six are ground level photographs of the property, and then, uh, attachment seven is, uh, the ordinance that would allow apartments to be located on the first floor, um, in the B two, uh, district in the downtown area. Staff would recommend approval of this request since it complies with, uh, the city code requirements. Uh, the requirements in bold are listed below and will serve as the conditions to the approval of this, this request. First, we should note that the first four-floor apartment is in appropriate use at this location. Next is, one and a half off-street parking stalls are provided per dwelling unit. Uh, the request complies with this condition, and you can see that in the, uh, map, the off-street parking map provided by the landowner. Parking stalls are provided on-site, or the property owner on, on which there is a dwelling unit must provide the city proof of security of said parking stalls at the time of the issuance of the conditional use permit, and annually by January one of each year, um, that's met, the, the property owner is providing the parking on-site. The minimum floor area, area for the business shall be no less than sixty percent of the total main floor area and be no less than eight hundred fifty square feet in size. After, uh, the apartment would go in, the floor area for the business, uh, on this property would be one thousand eighty-two square feet, and that's approximately seventy percent of the main floor area. The minimum dwelling unit, um, size shall be no less than four hundred square feet for an efficiency apartment, and no less than five hundred twenty square feet for a one-bedroom apartment. Uh, the applicant's proposal for the floor area of the apartment is five hundred twenty square feet, and this is roughly thirty percent of the first floor area. And lastly, the residential component of the structure is not facing the front of the building. As you can see in option one, uh, the residential area of this building, uh, would face New Ulm tire. This would be, uh, the side of the building, um, and the exterior walls for this residential unit are on the, um, side and rear of the building. We, the proposed conditions would be that the applicant, uh, would pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office, and then, um, the six conditions that we provided, uh, in the staff report in bold and just read through. So.
Thank you, John. I'll bring it up for discussion. We do have the property owner here, if, if anybody has any questions or concerns.
So, John, a question, just, so they're considering, what I see is two buildings that's being considered as one building?
Correct. Yep, those are all on the same, on one parcel of property, um, and are, are connected physically.
So to be part of what our requirements are, there's gonna be a small space in the front of that building that's gonna remain unused, most likely? You call it a display area?
Yeah.
That's just to follow the conditionals we've got here, and was it, uh, section nine ten two C, the residential component of the structure may not be facing the front of the building? So that's how you're getting that, so what are you planning to do with that space? I mean, it's...
I was gonna allow the business that is leasing from me on the other side of the, the building to use as the display area.
Okay.
Is, is my thoughts.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And Elwood, has staff reviewed this, uh, meet, uh, code-wise and everything, uh, for rental properties?
Yeah, we've talked, yep, we've talked about what's required for code.
What needs to be done, and Tim, you're under the understanding of that, and...
Yeah.
Uh, in that aspect.
Yeah, I've been talking with these guys and probably continue to talk to them about, you know, little things that come up with, with stuff like that, but, uh, yeah.
And you've expressed that it's been a challenging property to rent. Uh, I, I haven't personally seen a for rent sign in the window, but I'm just, I'm not here to...
Yeah, um, the previous owner had it's, um, you know, available for, for years and never had any luck with it and stuff, and it's, it's semi-finished, and, um, I just, I don't feel that the way it is, you know, would, would work well for, for office space, you know?
Is the bathroom gonna be shared by the business and the resident?
No.
Okay.
Nope. They will have their own space.
So I see, or you enter in from the garage, basically they will be?
Yep.
And then they'll still have a front door?
Yep, there's another exit, and I'm concerned punching a hole inside of it too for, for like egress, like escape and stuff to be safe.
Uh, Elwood, do, do we have to be concerned with this property being on the historical preservation within our community, or is it a non-contributing?
Non-contributing.
Non-contributing, so...
It's not in the district.
Okay. Okay, I just ask him.
Yep.
You know? You know, I guess I, you know, I'm satisfied, you know, you know, we've went through a lot of effort to, to look at the rezoning within our community here, and, you know, we're seeing different trends of business needs, you know, that we're seeing a call for residential or studios and things of that nature, and trying to be creative within our community and on that, so that's my two cents, I don't know how they're...
So the differences between number, option number one and number two is basically you got the egress window and option number two, but you don't have it number one?
Um, this, the second option, um, was, there was a hallway, um, through there connecting the, the, uh, space...
Oh, yes, okay.
To the, to the front entryway, which we thought might, might be a backup plan, you know, if you guys weren't comfortable with the...
From the other...
Using, using the space.
Sure, from the other business, yeah.
Sure. Okay.
Just, I guess, not totally related, but the business and the other part, they are satisfied there, they're happy there, they'll be there for a long time?
Hopefully, um, the business itself has been around for quite a while, you know, fifteen, twenty years and stuff, and, you know, it works good for me, they're not there that often, so.
Yeah.
Less wear and tear.
No further questions, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve option number one with the conditions that the city had put on.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. This will go to next Tuesday's, uh, council meeting, and this is just a recommendation for council.
All right, I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item would be three point three, consider the application of Al Payler on behalf of S and P Development, LLC requesting a variance from the city code to allow a zero side yard setback for the purpose of constructing twin homes on the property located at six thirty dash six fifty-four Roarge Avenue, and legally described as lots one through seven, block two, Milford Heights, second addition, the required setback is ten feet. And we'll look for staff's report.
All right, um, so as noted, uh, currently, the legal description is lots one through seven, block two, Milford Heights, second addition. It's in the process of being replatted right now, and the new plat, uh, would, would be lots one through four, block two, Milford Heights, third addition. Um, so they'd be going from seven lots down to four. Currently, the street address is six thirty to six thirty-four, Warju Avenue, and the proposed, uh, new addresses would be six fifty to six fifty-four, Warju Avenue. Uh, the property is, is generally located east of Warju Avenue, south of Beinhorn Street, and north of, uh, Fifth North Street and county stated highway twenty-seven. The land use designation, um, by the comprehensive plan is medium density residential. Um, surrounding land uses, uh, to the northwest and south include low desi- low density residential, and then to the east, medium density, density residential. Its zoning designation is R three, uh, the multiple family residence district. Surrounding zoning to the north and south includes the R one, single family residence district, to the east, the R three, and then to the west, the R two, the single and two family residence district. Currently, the site is vacant, um, but the area land uses, uh, area uses include to the north, vacant, to the east, vacant and townhomes, and then to the south, single family dwellings, and then to the west, twin homes. Public hearing notice was published in the journal on January eighteenth of two thousand twenty. So for a little bit of background, uh, the city code in section nine point zero eight, uh, the R three, multiple family residence district subdivision, uh, two, permitted uses states that any use is permitted in subdivision two of the R two and single, of R two, single and two family residence district, uh, are regulated therein. So then what you have to do is, is flip back in the code, um, and go to, um, section nine point zero seven, the R two, single and two family residence district, um, subdivision five C, side yard regulations, which state that there should be a side yard on each side of a building, each having a width of not less than ten feet. So that's where that ten-foot side yard setback comes from. The property is currently being replatted to accommodate the construction of these twin homes, um, and as stated before, it was previously Milford Second Edition, um, and is being replatted for the construct, and was platted, uh, previously for the construction of townhomes. The new plat would consist of four lots and two twin homes that would be located on the property. The twin home consists of two single family dwellings and each, uh, on their end of, own individual lot, but sharing a common party wall, which is typically right on the property line. The location of a common party wall, um, like I just said, is typically located right on the property line. As far as public comments, um, on this proposal, or the, sorry, this variance, uh, staff has not received any public comments on this variance. One alternative action could be to not allow a reduced side yard setback. For attachments, we provided the, uh, variance application, uh, a map showing the location of the property, zoning map, uh, site plan, um, which shows where the, uh, twin homes would be placed and where they have a common property line, uh, and shared, shared common wall, and then we have ground level photos. Staff would recommend approval of the variance for the following reasons. Um, the applicant was given a side yard setback in two thousand seventeen to permit the construction of townhomes on this very same property. There are twin homes direct, located directly to the west, and the construction of the twin homes on the east side of Warju Ave- Avenue would maintain the same type of development in this neighborhood. City has granted similar variances in the past for twin home land uses. Um, this variance would allow lower density, um, housing on the property, and twin homes are an established form of housing, and this type of construction is necessitates a common uh, party wall. The recommended, uh, conditions would come straight out of our, our standards in our, in our zoning ordinance, and they would read as follows. All structures in the property shall comply with the lot area requirements in the R two zoning district regulations, except for the setbacks along the side property line, all structures shall comply with all other setback requirements as provided in chapter nine of the city code. Separate utility services shall be furnished and provided to each dwelling unit. There shall be a common party firewall up to new construction standards found in the Minnesota State Building Code, and the applicant will record all required agreements, easements, and deed restrictions on all structures that about the zero lot line, and the property will comply with all other relevant zoning district regulations. I want to take a step back, I shouldn't say adopted standards that we have, these conditions are based off of the, um, proposed amendment that was read earlier in the meeting, and that's where they, that's where they come from.
Thank you, John.
I, I would also note that hopefully, this is the last request of this type that we will ever have to take action on.
John, a general question on these twin homes, between the twin homes all around town, there's still required the ten-foot side yard setback?
So you're asking about the twin homes that are currently, or that have been constructed?
Right, like, I'm looking at the ones along highway fourteen by, for some cash-wise. They seem to be very close together.
Uh, the twin, the twin homes that have already been constructed in the community, um, all had variances to be constructed across or up to that common property line.
No, I meant from between the, let's say you got twin home here and here, they have to have ten home, ten between each home?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. They do have that on those, boy, that looks narrow. Okay, thank you.
So that's ten feet on each side of each home, so a total of twenty?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet between the building. Correct?
Should be.
Correct, depending on the, depending on the zoning of the property, it could go down to a little as five.
Okay.
Well, they could, okay, thank you.
Clarify, is it for me?
Zone correctly.
Yeah, and I might note that it is possible that, um, variances might have been granted even for those side yards, I guess we'd have to go back and see what the record indicates.
Sure.
Looking at those, I'd hope we wouldn't do that anymore, it really puts them close together.
Was this the property that had extra utilities? Did we address that at all, or is that not?
That's the next item.
I move to accept the recommendation.
I'd second that.
We've got a motion and a second to accept the Al Payler variance request. Everybody signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item four point one, consider for approval the final plat of Milford Heights, third addition.
Okay, in this, uh, case, the applicant is, um, Al Payler, the property owner is S and P Development, LLC. A lot of this information is gonna be the same that you just heard. Um, the legal description is lot one through seven, block two, of Milford Heights, second addition, street address is six thirty to six fifty-four, Warju Drive. Uh, the property is generally located east of Warju Drive, south of Beinhorn Street, and north of Fifth North Street, county state eight twenty-seven. City council approved the preliminary plat with conditions at its January seventh, two thousand twenty meeting. Uh, the deadline for a decision on this matter by the city is March twenty-first, two thousand twenty, and those deadlines are identified in state statutes. The land use designation for the property is medium density residential. If the commission doesn't object, I'm just gonna skip down to maybe information that you haven't already heard, that's all right. In this particular case, notice, item number fourteen, none is required, uh, we have not received any public comments, um, on the plat. Uh, the status of utilities, we have water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer are loc- located in Warju Drive, or Avenue, and natural gas and electric are located in the alley. There is no park area that is required by the comprehensive plan. Project description, uh, Milford Heights, second addition was platted in August two thousand seventeen. As you know, it was platted for the construction of townhomes. Uh, the new plat reduces the number of lots from seven to four. Uh, the purpose is to accommodate twin homes. The property to be platted totals zero point nine two acres. Uh, conditions that were identified at the time, the... Uh, conditions that were identified at the time the preliminary plat was approved were a requirement to pay the plating fee of a hundred eighty dollars and that payment is pending. Uh, the second one was to provide an electronic file of the plat in an AutoCAD two thousand or newer format. Uh, that electronic file has been provided. Now, for your information, we get that from the land surveyor. Uh, we were to determine the status of the three unused utility services in Warju Avenue. Um, the city and applicant, uh, will enter into an agreement on how and when the three unused water services will be removed and that agreement will be signed by both parties and then filed for record. Should note that we have had a meeting with the, um, applicant on this matter and we have come to an agreement on how that will be handled and actually the, um, agreement has been prepared and it's in draft form. And we're circulating it at the present time for, uh, comment, so that is moving along. And should be completed by the time the, uh, final plat is considered by the city council, which will be the second meeting in February. The, uh, fourth item was the need to secure, uh, the zero foot, uh, side yard setback variances. You've recommended, um, approval of that request. Um, and then the final was to determine the need to amend the project development agreement and the, um, city attorney has determined that amendment of the agreement is not necessary. So, attached, you have a copy of the final plat, an aerial photograph of the property, zoning map and ground level photographs. Staff would recommend approval of the final plat with conditions since it complies with city code requirements. The remaining conditions would be to pay the plating fee of a hundred eighty dollars to secure approval of the zero foot setback variances and to have the respective parties enter into an agreement on the removal of the unused, um, water services. The, uh, contents of that agreement are going to, um, allow the applicant until December thirty first of twenty twenty-one to complete the work. Um, the reason that we extended the, um, uh, date was, uh, they anticipate doing other construction work in this area. And so, when they have the contractor in to do that construction work, then they could also do this work at the same time. So, there's, um, hopefully be some cost savings and convenience, uh, in, in doing it in that manner. Uh, we've provided two motions, one to approve and one to deny the request. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve the recommended, or recommend the approval of the, of the first plat? Final plat, I'm sorry, final plat of Milford Heights Third Edition with conditions.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a secondant, all in aye, all signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. And we're gonna go to item five point one, um, city council decisions concerning planning commission matters in January of two thousand twenty.
Okay, we're gonna cover that particular item and then, um, one other item as well. Um, at the council's January seventh meeting, they approved with conditions a preliminary plat of Milford Heights Third Edition, as you've heard. Uh, they also approved with one condition the variance request of Don Sanderson to allow a detached storage building to within three feet of the side property line. At the January twenty first meeting, there weren't any planning commission items on that particular agenda but some other things that, um, occurred that, um, may have, may be of interest to you is that, um, they accepted a matching grant in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars from the DNR for ash tree removal and replanting. John has been handling that. Um, I think that amount of money will allow us to remove how many ash trees?
Hopefully up to a hundred ten, hundred twenty?
Along the Boulevard?
Yes.
And how many ash trees are there on the, in streets and parks within the city?
Uh, roughly twenty-six hundred. Yeah, uh, it's, it's well over thirty percent of the trees in, in New Ulm are ash.
How many will have to be removed?
From what I understand and, and the research that's been done and where ash bor has been present for years, when it's there, unless you're treating it, they're, they're gonna go.
Have we sent the bids out already?
No, um, this week, actually tomorrow, we'll be sending letters out to all the property owners, uh, within the area where, uh, it's been decided on where the, the trees are going to be removed in those Boulevard areas. I should note that, eh, we aren't just going out there and removing everyone. Uh, they received a score, basically a tree health score um, when there was a community tree survey, uh, that was done. Um, so we use that health score along with the diameter of the tree, so we wanted to take the unhealthy, large trees out of the Boulevard. And those notices to the property owners who own that property and have that tree in their Boulevard, um, that's getting sent out tomorrow.
Okay. Have we had any, uh, feedback from the community, citizens, you know, with concerns that they might lose their tree?
Uh, no, but I'm assuming we're going to after these letters.
These letters, okay.
If somebody wanted to undertake the cost of injection or whatever themselves, would the city allow it to stay?
At, at this point, we're, um, we're going to be just removing those trees. Um, this grant can't, can't at all, uh, be used for paying for, uh, treatment.
No, if, if the homeowner decided to treat it.
Yeah, well, that's a discussion we would probably have with the individual, individual property owner and we'd have to have some sort of proof that that would be done.
Now, would these trees be removed off-site to be then burned or?
Yeah, they're all, uh, the, the city has already set up a location at the compost site where their diseased trees are to be put and that's, uh, the location where all the ash has to be moved.
Is, is there an area of the community where there is already evidence of the?
Yeah, yeah, certainly there, um, well, I'm sure you all know they found it on, uh, they found it up on Oakwood uh, earlier in the summer and then, once you started digging into it a little bit further, you could see that other ash in the area already have the same symptoms. They figure it's been around the area though, already about five years, um, enough to do so much damage that, uh, to those trees where the, where, where it is evident that, you know, the, all the bark's fallen off and, and they're looking pretty haggard.
I think the pro- just the property owner knows that there's a, through the public utilities, isn't there something for tree planting, eighty percent of the cost? For specific trees, is it?
Right, um, but through this program specifically, there's no cost.
No, of a removal, but if they wanna plant the tree?
No, uh, this place pays for the replanting as well.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
Maybe John wants to touch base, there's gonna be about six different species or seven species?
Seven different species.
Replaced.
Yep.
And this is a matching grant that, uh, we're providing to locate and stump removal and services in our match to the government with it.
Correct.
Okay, the, um, a second item is, um, the city council, um, approved a professional service contract with ISG Incorporated, it's an engineering firm out of Mankato. And that's for services, uh, for improvements to Twentieth North Street. Um, so I would expect sometime, it's not gonna be next year, but maybe the year after that, um, you will see, um, street improvements in that particular area, probably from, um, Front Street up to, um, North Broadway. Um, and then a third item is a set the bid opening date for the Herman Heights, uh, parking lot project for February twenty fifth. Uh, that project also includes a retaining wall on, um, Center Street. That concludes, uh, the report. Uh, now, I'd like to have John hand out, unfortunately, um, this is a newspaper article from the Mankato, um, Free Press and it talks about, um, a discussion that has been ongoing in North Mankato about parking um, in residential areas. And, um, they've had, they, they have an ordinance requirement um, and they basically, from the article, they don't enforce it.
Right.
Unless it must be on a complaint basis and, um, they're trying to address the issue but coming to a, um, an agreement has been elusive, uh, so far. Um, the reason that I wanted you to receive this is because these requirements are located in, normally in a zoning ordinance. And so, eh, as we approach the time when we update our ordinance, we're gonna have to deal with this issue. So, you may wanna read the article and, um, maybe at next month's meeting, if you have any comments or questions um, we can certainly try to, uh, answer them, but I just thought it would be good background information for you. I think it kinda gives you a, a good taste of, um, kind of what the issues are.
Dave, do you feel, uh, we have some of these issues within our community already?
I'm sure there probably are locations, yeah, where those issues are, are present, uh, yeah.
I think this was, when I built the house on, um, Eleventh North, I believe that was in some of the wording where I couldn't leave a trailer or anything parked in the driveway more than X number of weeks or days, whatever it was.
That was probably part of the covenant.
Okay, yeah, that could be.
Yeah, there's nothing in the ordinance right now.
Okay.
As for that.
Yeah, in some, uh, in some parts of the community, there are, um, covenants that exist that exists between the property owners that live within a certain designated area. And the city is not involved with the enforcement of those covenants. Uh, basically, the property owners are supposed to enforce it amongst themselves.
Something similar like that came to the commission here a couple of years back.
Yeah, we've, we've, uh, had that question come up, uh, periodically. Yeah, we had it on a home occupation up in the old Orchard Edition.
Thank you. Item five point two, heritage preservation commission activities.
Uh, we had one, uh, design review for this last month. That was it.
Any other discussion? If not, meeting adjourned.
Oh, what?
Oh, sorry.
One, just one quick item.
Dave?
Um, we are in the pro- staff is in the process of, um, looking at the, um, preparation of a solar ordinance for the, uh, city. Um, we've had some meetings with, um, the, uh, people in the Public Utilities Commission uh, staff and they have, um, recommended that, uh, this is something that we should look at. So, at next month's meeting, I think we'll probably will have a draft ordinance that we can present to you uh, for your consideration. Um, if, uh, it's acceptable, um, we can then, uh, move on to conducting a public hearing on its adoption. Again, this is something that would be located in our zoning ordinance, so.
Touch base on that, Dave, is that for residential, where they put it on their own individual, or is this for commercial or on vacant lots?
It's on everything.
Everything.
It covers the entire community.
I've had some inquiries about doing ground mounted, um, solar farms.
Try it again. Uh, any other business? Meeting adjourned.